Okay, it's 6:31 on Thursday, May 12. We're going to call a meeting to order for the City of Sandy Oaks City Council. This is a regular meeting. We'll do a forum call and call an order. Alderman Tremblay.
Here.
Alderwoman Tanguma.
Here.
Alderwoman Gillespie.
Here.
Alderman Tomcini.
Here.
Alderwoman Madawala.
Here.
We have a forum. I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item 3 on the agenda, I'm not sure, is Wayne Byer here? He's not here yet. Should I wait on that one? He has a party commitment.
We got a party for his attention.
No, we're gonna be talking.
Questions, they don't matter.
So we can just ignore that one for now.
If the council has questions, they can wait for the meeting.
Okay.
Is the approval of any type of resolution between the two of you?
Okay, perfect. Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed with item 3 on the agenda, which is discuss, consider, and approve a resolution approving the selection of Wayne Byer to conduct annual audits for the City of Sandy Oaks beginning with fiscal year 2014 slash 2015. This was something that I brought forward back in the February timeframe, but due to taxes, tax season, we weren't willing to discuss with us at the time. So I did follow up with Wayne Byer, and he's certainly willing to do this for us and has provided some information. Did I send a copy of the email that he sent to all of you? So it's a fairly detailed process for doing an audit. And they will do some preliminary work first that will involve asking questions, getting copies of minutes, getting copies of contracts, demographic information. They bring that back to their office and determine what auditing procedures will apply in their field audit. Then they perform a field audit, they bring that information back to the office, and write up an audit report for this information. They also send out confirmations, such as bank confirmations. And it takes approximately two to three months from start to finish, so it's a fairly intensive thing. He estimates that the fee for our audit for the year ending September 2015 would cost between $6,000 and $8,500. It's based on what he and I discussed back in February, and provided they don't come across anything unexpected, I don't think there's anything. I think it'll go probably quicker than two to three months unless there's some confirmation information that takes that long to get information back, so. The auditor has been delayed.
I think it's past you, and I'm not sure what the suspense was on performing the audit. Were any guidelines required to perform it? Were there any other, did we touch base with any others after the tax season?
I sent emails, but I didn't get any responses back. And honestly, his price was the cheapest of all that I was able to find. And he also does the audits for Pleasanton, Proteet, and Ellendorf, so he's in the area. And I think he's out of Pleasanton.
I move that we pass a resolution in the City Council that, for Sandy Oaks, that we retain Wayne Byer to perform our annual audit.
We have a motion by Alderman Tremblay to approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
A second.
Alderwoman Tanguma, seconds. Are we having any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we go to item 4 on the agenda, citizens to be heard. This item will be open for 30 minutes with three minutes to each speaker. If there's more than 10 speakers, each will be given 10 minutes, or two minutes, I'm sorry. We have seven speakers that have signed up. Just for informational purposes, the City Council is unable to respond to comments made by citizens during the public comment portion of the agenda as defined by the Texas Open Meetings Act. City Council members are available after the meeting to discuss individual concerns one-on-one.
Thank you. It's really hard to do.
No, it's good feedback.
We're good. So first up on the agenda would be John Krickman. He has several subjects he'd like to speak on.
Okay, I'll just read what I wrote. It's in regard to my question to the website on Agenda Items. And it says, what I wrote was, regarding the City of Sandy Oaks' agenda, it seems to me that the city father would rather do without citizen input through the public comment process. Given three days' advance notice of items on the agenda and the vaguely anonymous responses to citizen inquiries to the city website from donotreply@godave.com, which responses state, "All these questions will be answered at the meeting. How am I supposed to know if I am for an Agenda Item or opposed to an Agenda Item if I have no idea of the facts and circumstances on that issue until after my time of speech is closed? My question may or may not be answered during the meeting. Then voted on, then decided one way or another, in so doing, I will not have any relevant input on that issue." I would recommend that the questions that I asked the city government to answer, that they did not answer until after this time of speech, I would suggest that they do not vote on these issues until a later day, not today, because we don't know the facts. Agenda Items are 7, 8, 9, 18, 21, 22, and 23. I think there's some other discussion in the agenda about revamping this protocol on how we do this, and I think that'd be a good idea. And I thank you for your time.
Next is Catherine Rendell.
Yes, thank you. I prepared a couple of remarks for tonight because I'm still very concerned about communication between the City Council and the public. In January of 2015, I presented at a City Council meeting a rather lengthy list of items that had been on previous agendas and had just been dropped and forgotten about. To address the issue, in the following meeting in February, the City Council discussed how to fix that problem. David Tremblay made a motion to add an item to the city's agendas called unfinished business that was seconded by then Alderman Ball. It was voted on and unanimously approved for the city attorney to add that to, it was going to be Proposition 2014-2. Okay, the section was added, and starting in March of that year, unfinished business appeared on the agendas for the meetings. And that lasted through June of 2015, and then that also disappeared to be forgotten. Now I'm starting to see again Agenda Items that appear and then just they're postponed, and then they're not brought up again, certainly not in a timely manner. I'm also seeing a lot of ongoing issues that were simply not being updated on a regular basis. Now, a couple of those things are covered in tonight's meeting, and I thank you all for that. But there's really two huge items ongoing, and I'm talking about the City Marshal's Office, and I'm talking about the municipal court. The City Marshal's Office, we haven't been updated on the progress of that for a long, long time. And the municipal court was brought up in the March meeting, I believe, of this year, and it was postponed because the discussion was going to be too lengthy. But it didn't appear in April, and it's not here in May. And of course, that would be a prime item for this unfinished business section. Now, I'm asking that the City Council not only obeys their own ordinances, but sets up a system where we get regular updates on important city business. It's important. We deserve to know what's going on. We can neither support nor complain about the city if we don't know what's going on. I'm asking the City Council to come up with a process that, in a reasonably short period of time, gives us updates and reacts to their own Agenda Items. Basically, I'm asking the City Council to obey their own ordinances.
Next up is Deb Spade.
I just wanted to make a comment that I think the council's working really hard. I don't want to hear dumb positive things. I know that there's been an issue of communication between language barriers. I know that you all have researched and checked to see if other cities with their meetings have had interpreters, and that we found out, you know, that in Texas, so far that I know, there aren't any. And I think that's what came up. But I just want to thank you guys for going that extra mile and checking. Going into this, a lot of people don't realize everything that you do do, and I think you just need to thank them for what you have to, especially compared to the, you know, the beginning of this, pretty much a joke at the beginning, but I think we're good at succeeding. I think you guys are doing a good job for starting out with not paying the dollars before.
Next up is, is it Frances Sanchez?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Frances Sanchez, and I am back here to lead part of the city. I am very sad that we stopped coming, and we stopped coming because of the disruptive, you know, meetings that we're having. And we are the person that want to move forward, not backwards. I know there's a lot of, you know, communication issues, a lot of issues, like you mentioned. We're in the city, and I'm here to let all of you know that I'm here to be a positive individual that is going to be doing the best that I can to listen to who we elected. And of course, I want to say feedback from them. We voted them in, we want to help them the best way we can. Unfortunately, we can't keep everybody happy, but I'm willing to educate individuals, if anybody needs any help, translation or anything, I'll be willing, I'll be, I'll step in and help out. But I'm here to really listen to you guys and to do what I can to help everybody understand what the process is and what, you know, you gotta know the law, that's what we have, we have totally present, to help us out and run a good council. And I hope that we all just keep it to you, thinking positive, and to be here to help, to help our community, and to do what's best for all of us, for our kids, our families. This could be big, we're just small, we're starting, but let's give everybody a chance. I just want to say that. And thank you so much for everything, all of you. Frances Sanchez.
Next up is Samuel, but I'm sorry I can't read your last name. I'll just step up, sir. Okay, we'll move on to Jose Perez.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jose Perez, and the reason I'm here is, one is, I'd like to thank BJ because I had a ducking problem over there close to it where I live at, Waterwood Park. She responded. I was very surprised. But at the same time, I'd like to make y'all aware that if Shannon Ford would not have shown up, I would not have gotten a response. What I'm trying to make these people aware of is that if over here, that the people, if we don't form a group, with all due respect to the people over here, they're gonna do whatever they want and be non-responsive. And I'm not trying to be a negative person, but it's not my first rodeo. It's not my first rodeo, and I'm not trying to speak against them, but I'm just trying to make y'all aware that one-on-one, talking to these individuals, they could care less until they see a group united over here, and we all unite. And at the same time, I'd like to make y'all aware, this is not about English, this is not about Spanish, this is about the better for Sandy voters. That's all I, that's all I expect.
Thank you. Did Samuel come back in? The income and expenses will be recorded by City Clerk Charlotte Ray.
Our beginning balance was $249.153.35. Our total expenses were $5,856.56. Our total income was $12,974.87, leaving us with a balance of $256,327.66.
Item 6 is consent agenda. We have a number of items on here. Discuss and consider approval of the minutes from the April 13 special City Council meeting. Approve for payment invoice 1106 from Cassandra Montez in the amount of $4,176. Approve for payment to Pullman, Capuccio, Pullman, Vincent &amp; Jones at $180 for legal services. Approve for payment to City of Ellendorf of $192 for animal control services. Approve for payment to City of Selma of $186 for animal control services. Approve for payment to Alex Ramirez of $140 for security services. Approve for payment to screen impressions of $500 for city vehicle signs and lettering. Approve for payment to Richmond Land Surveying of $525 for math of City of Sandy Oaks to include extraterritorial jurisdiction. And authorize the mayor to execute the contract with River City Engineering for services as municipal engineer. If there's any of these items that need to be discussed, they need to be pulled and considered separately.
I move we approve the consent agenda as listed. Item 8.
We have a motion by Alderman Tremblay to approve the consent agenda items A through I. Do we have a second?
A second.
Alderwoman Gillespie, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7 is to discuss, consider, and approve an ordinance creating the position of city I brought this one to the agenda, and the reason is there is a lot of work that goes into keeping this city going in the path it needs to be going. And being that we're all volunteers and new to this, there's a lot we don't know, and we're spending a lot of time doing research, sometimes maybe not getting all the answers, but getting enough answers to make a decision. I've checked with other cities, and most of them have city administrators. If they're not in a home role, then they have a city manager. Correct me, a city manager is a home role, yes. So it would make sense to help our, to have a resource that the council can go to to answer questions. I know we've relied very, very heavily on Cassandra, and she's done a great job, but she's expensive. We love her, but she's expensive. And a city administrator can help with a lot of the things that she's been doing. I mean, we're still gonna need you for the legal part of it. But a city administrator could help with a lot of that. They would be the central point of contact for the community, they would work, anything that the city, a contract or initiative that the city wants to pursue, they would be the point of contact who would kind of lead that, and then they would help us to do things better and more efficiently. And I think it was just a matter of time until we got to this point where we need somebody with that skill set to help us out. And so this is just to approve creating the position.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, make a motion to create the position of city administrator.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Gillespie to approve an ordinance creating the position of city administrator. Do we have a second? Alderwoman Madawala makes a second. Any further discussion?
Would this position, would it to replace the secretary's position? Are we gonna retain the secretary as well?
We have that as an additional agenda item.
I can attend to that before we set the position.
This would assume a lot of the--
A lot of the duties--
A lot of the responsibility, yes.
I think we still require secretary for recording minutes--
Yes.
--for doing other duties. Correct.
So the city of Selma and La Caus combined the city administrator.
Which one?
I was just looking at this. It looks like at some point it was combined, isn't it? We can combine the two positions.
Which one? The administrator and what?
Yeah, I was just looking at skill sets, and I was noting that some cities combine the city clerk and the administrator.
I know of a city that has combined the city administrator and their finance person. So we're free to do whatever we need, but this is a higher skill set than what we have, and it's honestly something I think that we have definitely been a bit wrong.
Can we afford both positions?
We'll talk about budget. So this is just creating the position. This is not filling the position, this is only the ordinance to create the position. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number 8.
Excuse me, I was standing there waiting, and then you look around, and she didn't first tell me.
Well, ma'am, the public comment section was earlier, now we've moved into the meeting, so there's no public comment.
Okay, so it's just y'all?
Yes, it's just the City Council meeting. Number 8, discuss, consider, and approve an ordinance amending the approved annual budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016, to add or amend line items for city administrator, city clerk, municipal marshal office, street lighting, street repairs, and residential waste cleanup, and creating a line item for seed monies from Waterwood Park Property So you should have two documents in front of you. One of them is, this is the budget that we approved for the various line items. The next one is, this was very loosely done, this is the one that we did, is in no way correct. Again, the city administrator will help tremendously in making sure that this is not correct. So these line items that we approved have been consolidated into more accurate line items. I'm not gonna state that they're 100% accurate, because I may have called something one item and it could be something else. For example, animal control, I put it under professional services. You know, it's not, I don't know that that's truly what it is, but that's where I put it. So this here gives you how the line items are grouped together under the major categories, and then the totals add up, and you-- And then the totals add up and you see at the bottom, the net sum is zero, which means that your expenses and revenues balance out. And then the next columns are October through April. Those are actual dollars by category that have been, that are showing on the bank statements based on the transaction date. And the last column is as of May 10th. So this is about as accurate and timely as you can get. And then there's a year-to-date column of what all of the months are for the current fiscal year. And between those two is the balance of what's left. So there's a couple of blank items on here that I added for consideration. One is the audit services. You know, we need to put some money on that line item, or maybe we don't. We budgeted $55,000 under professional services. We've only spent $23,000. You know, we haven't gotten anything on engineering. We may have some more coming in on animal control. And we certainly will have some more on the attorney fees. And also, there is something here for Bear County appraisal district. This was something we didn't budget for originally, but it's the fee that we paid to the county. And sure, I think that is because...
To process.
To process, okay. So we didn't put any monies on that line, but it still went in the professional services And another one that I, I'm not sure if this is correct or not, but I put capital outlay of $30,000 because we had set that aside for a municipal building. So I put it up there. That's could or could not be the right place to put that. We did, we did budget for office equipment. We haven't purchased any office equipment because we don't have offices, so we have $13,000 sitting on that line item that perhaps we could move to cover something else. And remember, this budget that we put together and approved expires at the end of September. So, you know, it's just a short timeframe before we're starting on another one.
Okay, so if we don't have a municipal court where it says judge and we count some, let's decide then when it rolls around, if we haven't had a judicial system, then we can, we can have that.
We can. And we can do it before. We can move some of that money for a, for the budget, I mean, for the audit, for a city administrator. The other thing is if you look at the ad valorem taxes, it was budgeted at $225,000. Through six months and 10 days, we've brought in $177,000. I would anticipate in July to see another spike because there's people like myself who do 50/50. So I would anticipate seeing some more. There's some people that I think if you're over 65, you could get on a 10-month payment plan. So, but I think we're on track. Excuse me, if you need to talk, would you step outside, please? Franchise taxes, we're doing pretty good there. We budgeted 92. We brought in 53, almost 54. And we have not seen, we've only seen two deposits on that, so that's, that's working So we definitely need to budget something for audit. And we gave a number of anywhere from 80,000 to 90,000. Which one? Oh, it was, oh, the city administrator, right.
The administrator, city clerk. And the offices in the approval.
Okay. Let's start with the easy one. I have a check here in my hand from Waterway Park Property Owners Association. It's actually a cashier's check for $8,090.31. So we need to create a line item on the budget to be able to account for that. And I'm thinking here that it would be under other revenue total. So we wouldn't budget, we wouldn't change our budget to do that, but we would have it as a line item for incoming monies as a correct.
It would be in addition or change, whatever we think. The amount would change, not the additional line item. It wouldn't have to indicate that it was from until we could do a...
But it's, we're not amending the budget. We're not, we're not changing the totals in the budget.
No, just the general...
We're just creating a line item where we can account for that.
Yes.
Got it, okay.
And all that money gets to the court.
It is, no, 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 it's, well, it's, it's been designated to address the TCEQ issue first and foremost.
Looking at the approved budget there, I don't really see where it goes.
I'm thinking it's under the other revenue, where you have interest income and other So I'll make a note to put that one on there. And again, you don't have to tweak this anymore, make sure the line items are all correct, but that's for the discussion. And so the city administrator and city clerk, my thought was that we had put aside or budgeted $30,000 to pay for the city secretary. I'd like to suggest that we move 20 of that to the city administrator position.
Is that a part-time position?
It's an interim part-time, yes. For the city administrator, yes, it's an interim part-time. We don't have...
So you're going to be 20,000?
20 from the city secretary.
Can we move it from the judge since we don't have a judge?
We can do that.
Because we don't have the municipal...
Well, we have other things that we need, we have other things that we need to fund And then the martial municipal offices, you know, that's just an ongoing thing that we're still trying to resolve. There's, there's gonna be funding that's available there to move to another line item. But one thing I want to be cautious of is that we do leave a buffer for, because there's one item in particular, the sales tax is a little leaner than it was budgeted. And I also want to account for potentially any ad valorem taxes that aren't collected before the end of the fiscal year. So, and the other thing that we did is on the street lighting. That's down here at the bottom under electricity. We didn't put any funding down there for that because at the time, we didn't, we didn't have the CPS bills. So we probably should put some monies on that line. You want to move it from the judge or any suggestions?
We already paid, we paid that some money already that's included in that 63.57.
That is the total amount.
We took some of that from the general fund. Maybe not?
Well, we're not transferring from the general fund. Overall, as long as you don't exceed...
What did you, what was the question you said?
We have electric bill.
Yeah. And the electric bill should be running, I'm gonna say it's just under $1,000 a month is what it's gonna be running. Just under $1,000.
And March was 847.
March was 847. So we've already spent 63.57. And then we're looking at, we need to change my, five more months. So probably need to be somewhere in the $12,000.
Be wary around those.
About $12,000, yeah. We can take some of that from the judge, or we can take some of that from the police patrol officers. Well, no, no, no.
Let's do the judge.
We're not gonna use the judge.
Let's do the judge.
Do the judge?
We need all the police officers.
So we're gonna leave 8,000 in there for the judge? Okay, street repairs was the next one. And we did do something on street maintenance. We budgeted 25,000.
Condition of the road.
We're gonna need a little more, yes. I mean, you can see here on operating supplies, we put $10,000. We haven't even spent a dime on that. So there's some monies there. Up here, we have elections. We set aside $10,000 for elections, but we're not gonna have elections till November. That would be in next year's budget, correct?
Correct.
That would be paid for out of next year's budget, not this one.
Yeah, I would think this, like, this budget item is in case we had a mail in.
Yeah. So there's 20,000 right there that we could move down to streets. $10,000 for animal control. I mean, we've only spent 400 plus whatever we have approved on the agenda here for, it's almost like another $400, so.
Okay.
Well, that's what's on here, is 400 is on here. But what I'm saying, the two bills for Selma and Ellendorf come up to about another 400. So that's 800. I don't think we're gonna...
I wanted to check the snaps. Like, they charged 2,500 for...
Oh, really?
Yeah. And they were doing pleasant in the last high part, so I wanted to check the snaps and see if they were on here. So, yeah. I'd like to get out animal control as it is.
Okay, no, that's fine. I mean, if you look in the, if you look in the other category, we budgeted 152,500. We've only spent 4,100. So some of that is the reserve fund. But I'd kinda like to leave that alone to perhaps cover any shortage from collection of taxes or a miss on sales taxes as well.
I take 2,000 from fuel and 4,000 for training. Put as well in the street repairs, another 6,000.
Okay, so 4,000 from training. So that would leave 2,900 there. And what was they giving you for fuel?
And 2,000 out of fuel.
That's it, 2,500. So that gives us 6,000 for the streets.
So that's 26 plus the 25.
And we have exactly 26.
26.
What'd you get off training?
2,000 out of training, 4,000.
So that would leave 2900.
So I have 2,000 for street repairs.
Okay, so you're taking 2,000 plus 4,000 is 6, plus 10 for elections. Is that right?
I didn't touch it. But we did that off the last one.
Oh, we did that for electricity, sorry.
Elections, operating supplies.
And so what do you have for streets now?
3,000.
You got 4,000 for training.
12 for the judge. We have 12.
We got elections 10. We have operating supplies 10.
So that's gonna change the... 65. Repairs and maintenance, we go to 53,500 for streets.
Total on that?
53,500 for streets and repairs and maintenance.
Do you have to use any of my employee relations?
We have not.
Are we relating well?
Supplies and printing would go to 16,800. And then utilities would be 22. What do you, what do you have in the other column? No, we changed fuel. We dropped fuel.
Oh, we did drop fuel.
Fuel is 2500.
That's what I'm thinking.
We dropped training to 2200.
6500 there. Under personnel services, let's go over those numbers real quick. For city administrator, what did we do? And city clerk? Judge? And offices. So that number's right. Street maintenance, we took it to 51, is that right?
Right.
So, 53,500. Under election, supplies, did we drop that to zero?
Zero.
Okay. So that drops that to 16,800. And under electricity, we added 12, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Hold on, I see what I forgot. Okay, well, that's how much you add, hold on, I see what I forgot.
How old are just?
Yeah, I think we need to be adding something accordingly when we move it from one item to the other. Can we drop police officers to forty? I mean, we're just talking till the end of the fiscal year.
Right, right.
Drop it to forty? And then that would put us back in balance. So that's gonna change that.
That's just for the rest of this year?
Correct, just for this fiscal year. So that's gonna put the personnel services at seventy-eight thousand. Okay, so we covered all the items that we needed to be funded.
Brush and litter.
We do have, yeah, we do have brush and litter for ten for trash pickup.
Do we need to increase?
We might need to increase it. And we've got here for operating supplies, supplies and printing, we've got a little extra on there that we could live some monies from. Operating supplies, we've got ten thousand on there.
I thought we used it already.
Yeah.
I thought we used it for the street maintenance. Yeah, we did.
Okay, that's where it came from.
Yeah, we used elections.
So we took all of the, we took all the operating now?
Yeah, it is.
What did you do with all the supplies?
So that makes that number sixty-eight. And so, well, we've already taken ten from, from the police, you wanna put it down here on the? Nothing. Well, I don't want to take all of it.
We do have stamps and stuff.
Well, that's down here on the post-it.
Oh, postage, two thousand.
You wanna take ten from there?
Yep.
What is that, six?
Seventy-five. Seventy-five hundred.
It's gonna be scattered, probably.
Sixty-five. So we'll take sixty-five from there. And then we, we, we took ten from the patrol officers, so we could do that, plus another ten. And that should be down, brush and litter, I think. That would put us at ten, twenty-six five. And so this number here, minor tools and equipment is gonna go to sixty-five for footage. Seventy-eight total on personnel services.
Yeah, with the vehicle maintenance.
Okay, we're good. Back to, back to what we need to do.
So street maintenance is.
Street maintenance is fifty-one even.
Vehicle maintenance, twenty-five hundred, so it's fifty-three.
Correct, fifty-three thousand five hundred for repairs and maintenance total. Fifty-three five hundred for. Repairs and maintenance total. We're putting fifty-one of that on the street maintenance. Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm looking at here. Okay, so. So what we've done is we've switched around some budget items to account for a city administrator of twenty thousand. City clerk of ten thousand. We did not change the municipal or marshal office number. That's a crap. We didn't change that. For lighting, we did increase lighting from zero to twelve thousand. Street repairs went from twenty-five thousand to fifty-one thousand. And residential waste cleanup went from ten thousand to twenty-six thousand five hundred. And we did, we're gonna create a line item to account for the incoming monies from the WPPOA. And I'll, I'll try to figure out exactly where that goes, it's either gonna go into other revenue, probably other revenue is where it's gonna go.
So for the motion, instead of having to read all those line items and specify whoever pays the notion for, for that exhibit A, that would touch you with the ordinance.
And we're talking about this one, the latest market bond?
Um, no, we just put it into the.
To the bridge of it. Ah-ha. Oh, this is exhibit A. Okay, okay. Okay, you would like to make a motion?
Or actually, the ordinance is. The amended one shows exhibit A, and then it said to be within the final. The final number for the amended budget without the line items mounted there.
Okay.
Who would read number eight?
Sorry?
It's number eight.
It's number eight, yeah.
To approve an ordinance amended.
Wait, you don't need to read the entire line item, you can just say approve the amended.
Yeah. And that's what you just read a while ago.
Right.
I make a motion that we approve the amended annual budget for fiscal year twenty fifteen through sixteen for line items. I specified in show exhibit A.
We have a motion by Alder Woman to approve an ordinance amending the approved annual budget for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen. And as identified on exhibit A. Do we have a second? One second. Alder Woman, unless be seconds, do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Item nine, discuss, consider, and approve a resolution approving an agreement with Texas First Group Replacement Services for interim city administrator services and retaining Ken Roberts as interim city administrator. I was introduced to Texas First Group Replacement Services through another city administrator who had used a, their city had originally used a, an interim part-time city administrator in the past, and now they have a full-time city administrator. So I placed a call to this gentleman, and we had a nice conversation, I explained what we were looking for, and he thought he had somebody in mind. And this is, if I'm not mistaken, Cassandra, this is, this is a contract position, correct? It's not a, or is it an employee position?
Uh, this one specifically is for a contract position.
It's a contract.
It can be an employee position for the city eventually, but for the interim.
For the interim, it's a contract position, okay. So, um, the Texas First Group does have a contract. And Cassandra has done her due diligence on this, and there's only a couple of things that she wanted to possibly address on the contract. Have you been back in touch with him, or?
I've not gotten all of these items with him. No, the only thing that we added or proposed to add was a thirty days for notice, which we should have agreed on, which we didn't have any termination terms. And any expenditures that he would spend. Yeah, I don't know if council would have given discretion, discretion of anything over a thousand or two thousand, whatever amount the council's comfortable with to bring in before council, before he makes that sort of expenditure. As part of the schedule to us, that was a, a part of the contract that they provided to us.
Okay.
And then the other, the only other thing was just approving of any sort of billing statements, since council meets monthly and approves any bills that come in. If that billing statement comes before council, giving the, you know, proper notice to the public, it would have to go on to the next.
Right.
Agenda. So that was, those are the only changes we had proposed to them, and I don't know whether they're acceptable or not. But if the city wants to either approve, as is contingent on them, approving those terms that we've made proposed changes to, or having another final one come back, if those terms are not approved. But I just, the, the written determination is probably, or the thirty days for the notice is more convenient for the city, just so in case it's, you can't terminate the day before, so just, and then the individual item in excess of, that's really what the council's comfortable with. If they want to give him just discretion or a space to operate on the budget.
Office supplies?
Uh, see, something like office supplies, maybe he doesn't need to go, maybe something, if he, as long as he's operating within the budget, the city council may be comfortable in spending, if he needs to, as long as he's within the budget. Or if it's something, if, say, animal control services goes over a thousand dollars per month, does, does council want him to come back to council? So it's really up to what the council's comfortable with.
The thirty days that you have here for written notice, you know, it, it does say in the contract that they acknowledge that its provision of services is at the discretion of the mayor and the city council, and that the mayor and city council may terminate this agreement at any time with or without cause, so, you know. I'm, I'm leaning towards.
Just leave them at my house. When other child will not make a difference on the couch?
It'll be away.
It's seven thirty-eight, and just to note that Alder Woman, Madam, has left the meeting for personal reasons. So, back to the, um, the contract. I mean, I, I understand, and I agree with kind of what you've asked, it gives us something else to consider. But at this point, we kind of don't know what we don't know. And I think the contract overall is effective for now.
It really doesn't raise huge concern with me.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, but I think it's just, it's given that he operates within the budget. Outside that, it doesn't really fit in the contract system.
Right.
It was really more for the council's comfort sake than.
Right. And so, this, this particular agenda item is, is a two-part, correct? So, the candidate that Texas First Group brought forth is a gentleman named Kenneth Roberts. Mr. Roberts is here with us this evening, so council wants to ask him any questions, but he did provide his, his resume, and he is previously with the city of Selma as city administrator, and I did talk with Mayor Daley at Selma, and Mr. Roberts comes highly recommended. And I did talk with Mayor Daley at Selma and Mr. Roberts comes highly recommended. Yes, Mr. Daley speaks with a bit of an accent. It's not Texas. So are there any questions that the council has of Mr. Roberts?
Are you the city administrator in any other city right now?
No, sir. I retired in December. My wife was having pain, bleeding, ed, you know. And I tried, wanted to work at Walmart, and that wasn't for me. Buy clothes, that wasn't for me. And I talked to Mr. Swift, and he said, well, she's actually good, and something you don't have to do. You're right.
And you have how many years' experience in city administration?
Nineteen.
Nineteen years. So that's definitely some knowledge that we could leverage.
Are you self-employed basically or do you work for this company?
Uh, I'm a, or a returning worker, company, contract.
He's, he retired as city administrator.
Oh, no, but if there's a company.
Well, it's Texas First Group and.
It's ours, one.
Yeah. So think of them as like a temporary employment agency, basically. And that's what they do is specific to municipal type work. That's, that's their sole thing that they do.
I've been out twenty-two years in federal government, my last twenty from the Department of Commerce, and then went into city government. All the things I've done, there's nothing older than the city.
Really? So, I, I'll, I mean, you all have this resume.
Right, it's impressive. You work with FEMA, you know, you lowered tax rate from forty percent to twenty-two cents, controller of the year, a lot of different cities who work for you, the federal, civil service, you did some economic development, did a lot of big things. Then you worked on sewage, lines, new police department, ear, you know, your Jefferweil trades.
That's sure to know.
Okay, well, I vote that we approve a, approve, yeah, approve a resolution, approve an agreement with Texas First Group Replacement Services for Interim City Administrator Services and retaining Ken Roberts as Interim City Administrator.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Tenguma. Do we have a second?
A second.
Alderwoman Gillespie, seconds. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll be talking. Okay, on to item number ten. Discuss, Consider and Approve an Ordinance Establishing a Policy for Citizens to Be Heard and Repealing Ordinance Number Two Zero One Four Dash Eight. This was brought by Alderwoman Tomassini and Alderwoman Gillespie. And I have the red line and the clean versions on this one, so you can kind of see it's a, I have to rewrite. So, the original one would be repealed and replaced by this term, is that correct, Cassandra?
Yes.
Okay. And basically, what, what's happening here is the original ordinance that was written and approved only allowed for citizens to be heard on any regular city council meetings. This would allow for a citizens-to-be-heard segment on, um, regular and special meetings.
It doesn't make it mandatory.
Does not make it mandatory, but I mean.
Makes sense that allows it.
Well, sure. Absolutely.
And nothing else from the original ordinance has changed, other than adding that section two to allow for citizens to be heard in special meetings to the rest of the, the rest of the segment.
I motion that we approve it. We have the ordinance, twenty sixteen dash forty-two establishing, oh, wrong one. Okay, start establishing policy for citizens to be heard and repealing ordinance number twenty fourteen dash.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Tenguma. Do we have a second?
A second.
Alderwoman Tomassini, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item eleven, Discuss, Consider and Approve Amending Ordinance Two Zero One Six Dash Four Two, Establishing Regulations Prohibiting Litter to Include Abatement Procedures. So, I like looking at the red line versions because it helps me understand what actually changed on them. And, uh, so this would also get a new ordinance number, it would supersede the previous one.
Yes.
Okay.
And again, this is also the same, other than.
And section four, yeah.
Actually, there's section four for abatement and then cost and establishing.
Section six for cost, yeah, and the revenue is getting.
What do you mean by abatement?
So, well, so what happens in an abatement, if you read through there, basically it allows the city, if there's a, an issue, that's the elephant in the room, it's the trash issue in the city. Since we don't have a marshal's officer, a means to enforce, I mean, we can send letters out and threaten them, but we have the means to enforce it. So an option that's available to the city is to institute an abatement procedure. And what that does is the city still does a notification and says, you have so many days to do this. And if they don't do it in that timeframe, the city does it. And we send them a bill for it. And if they don't pay the bill, we put a lien on their property. And if they don't pay that lien, it's with ten percent annual interest. And if they violate it again, and within a twelve-month period, there is no notification required, we just do it and take care of it. So it's just, it's a way for the city to make something happen when the owners are not going to do it and we don't have any other enforcement means to do so. Is that pretty much?
Because this is a nuisance of ordinance, it allows us to handle things differently other than criminal.
Correct. And it only applies to this litter of nuisance. It's not, it's not widespread for all other ordinances, it's very specific.